All right, we're going into our call meeting. And during this call meeting, we're going to go into executive session. An executive session is to discuss or deliberate upon employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee. They have a move and a second to go on to that?
So one.
They have a move and a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of that, no more saying aye? None opposed, think that we're going into executive session? Just be back the order. Uh, who's going to?
Um, Mr. Chairman, the motion was made by Jerry Morris, saying my deputy come out of executive session 11-09, say anything, um, no other actions taken. Would you anything motion out of approved executive session minutes as I read them to go on in that session?
So.
Yeah, second.
All that in favor, let's know the saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Let's see, thank you. All right. Now then. We are out of executive session, back to a regular normal meeting. We have no, we have no budgets this time from the, uh, budget from the Sheriff's Department, or actually any other department, other than what you I can pick out from my own. So the miller rate that would be set today is a tentative, tentative miller rate. So, y'all got anything to say? Any comments on that? All right. You want to make a, make a motion that, can I have a motion that we accept it? Tentative miller rate until we get some of these other numbers in?
As long as the word tentative is there.
Tentative, tentative. One, have a second? Second. Have a move and a second. Now, this is tentative because we haven't, we do not have the numbers of the other department heads at all.
What was the, what was the miller rate?
One, half, half a mill, half mill of last year's.
So they did the second thing, two, two, zero?
Yeah. Seven point two, yeah.
So the motion is to approve tentative seven miller rate and seven point two?
Yeah, that's correct. The tentative increase from increasing miller rate of seven point two-two mills increases by half a mill, I thought it does. Until we get some other, until we get some other numbers in from the other department heads. Where's, where'd Fay go?
Oh, there you go.
The, uh, when are they going to have the, when are both their elected officials in the other department have the budget seen? When'd you say that? December the 5th? Okay. All right. All right, have a move and a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of that, no more saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. That gets us out of this meeting. Does anybody have a comment? I'm opening up. If everybody just take about three minutes, we'll go ahead and open up the comment.
We need to cut. You don't have to give these departments a cut. You're going to have to cut. If you've got to raise taxes, you're running the business, you've got to start dwindling off. If your insurance rates have gone up, something's got to go. Bottom line is what you do in business, you said three minutes.
People's going to ask me, so I, I just want, if you'll tell us to be clear, the items y'all talked about a while ago, what's causing the increase, the, the, so we'll know exactly when somebody asks, why is it going up? You know, give us the specifics.
I'll be glad to print this out for you right here. Now, I hope Fay would have had that on the.
That's just the ones that's told us what.
That's just the ones that told us.
Well, they want what they get, maybe to different things. I like the way you're thinking.
Huh? I like the way you think. That's all we can say, we haven't got the other budgets seen yet. So, but we got to come up, we got to get the process started, and there's going to be some open meetings on this thing, but we got to get the process started.
I think it'd be a good idea just to make it clear so that the public would know what is, what are we looking at now, what's, what's caused this talk? You know, what's caused.
We can have them budget meetings in here where anybody wants to come in too.
That'd be a great idea.
At a time when it's.
The budget, so we're going to open meetings.
And we've had it a lot.
Well, the budget meetings are open meetings, but the taxpayer has no time that they can talk. Last year, at the budget meetings, we were told we cannot speak. Well, any department head is talking to commissioners about the budget. We have stifled free speech, and we don't have any time in this meeting. This should have something where there's an hour for public comment, not three minutes per person. Before we adopt anything, we ought to get out all of the information, have all of the discussion going back and forth on it. For instance, the Board of Elections. Why can't they put half of those machines in their budget for 2015, half of them for 2016? In a business, you wouldn't do that. You get your machines in in 2015, you don't have an election, you work out the bugs on them, you have the next wave coming in January 3rd or 4th, so you have how to get ready for, um.
That'd be a, that'd be a good question to ask the.
Well, that's why we don't ever get to ask these questions.
By all accounts, they don't have a very good turnout for voting, and they said as much the last time we had a vote on a, an election, it was such a pitiful number that I think we could still do with, you know, the amount of people that vote. Use the newer ones, but not worry about the ones not.
These elected officials defending their positions. And last year, at those budget hearings between sessions, where we did talk, as you know, I'm saying this for other people, uh, Jerry or I, who were normally there, would ask questions or write comments, one of the biggest things that we took out of it was a comment by Fay that ninety to ninety-two percent of every department, I clarified it with her today, and the Roads Department might not be that high, it might be only seventy percent of the Roads Department, that in most departments, ninety to ninety-two percent of cost is nothing but salaries and benefits. It's not trucks, it's not asphalt, it's not anything. And the comment was made then, just like in a business, you've got to cut headcount. Uh, if my operating costs outstrip my revenue in a real world, I'm out of business. So my operating costs go down. Now, that can mean I make a sheriff's op, uh, sheriff's car will last two years longer, I rebuild engines, I, there's something wrong with those ones. But I don't think we've done anything. I, you know, I've asked Fay if there's any comment about cutting headcount. I don't see it, I don't think anybody has cut anything.
Now, I can speak up for, from the areas that we're responsible, we have cut headcount.
We gave you kudos.
We gave you kudos. The problem, I don't, the problem, the issue we have is maybe some other departments, or whatever they're at.
How many business people are sitting in this room?
I understand, I'm one of them.
We understand what two plus two adds up to.
But we, as commissioners, by state law, we're required to give other, the other elected officials, department heads enough money to run their departments, that, that's our requirement.
I understand.
Now, us three sitting here, we were not elected to sheriff, we were not elected as clerk of court, we were not elected as probate magistrate, so we don't know, well, we know the circumstances of these offices are run, but we don't get into day-to-day activities on trying to manage their, their departments or staff or whatever. But, there again, these budget hearings that are going to be coming on are open to the public, for y'all to be here and hear what's going on. If y'all got questions, write them to us, we'll ask them the questions.
Well, when those, when those budget hearings are held, there needs to be given take, there needs to be an open line where the taxpayer who's funding everything gets to have input. I think we need a local ordinance where, just like I think it was Joey, uh, a few years ago, requested a town hall style meeting over at the high school, where every elected official was up there. That needs to be a local ordinance where they defend their budget to the taxpayer who can push back.
They're supposed to, they're supposed to be defending their budget here amongst us that are here, without going to.
But we don't, we, like last year, we had no input in it. We could not question any department head during that budget process.
Not during the budget hearing?
We could not open our mouth during that budget process.
Just an example, I mean, when we discussed it in the general brought up, you know, those voting machines, there's some scrap value in there. How about retrofit value? We don't, do we have to buy new? Brand new. And there's some value in what we've already got.
There's a whole different program, I think.
Those belong to state. Then why are we having to pay for them?
Well, they're doing away with that program. Then we've got to buy our own. The state bought the, bought the first seventy machines, I think, when they, when they started this program, and the state bought them all. But now, state's not buying them all, these machines have got to be, state's not buying anything. Can we, can we not buy, for lack of a better word, not use, but retrofit? Rebuild?
Whole different program, boy, that's what they say.
Well, the state should reimburse for the scrap value or whatever, we need to know that stuff.
The state going to reimburse, because they take the machine stock.
That's not a part of our wallet, that's just a different part of our wallet. You know, it's not like, it's just like talking about grants, when you make a big thing, oh, well, this is being covered this year by a grant. That's just a different corner of my wallet. It's tax dollars.
Phil, legally, can they not talk during those meetings that we have, the budget meetings? What's the legal?
Meetings are, they are public meetings, but they are not meetings of the public. You set your end of quarter meeting, you won't simply vote just based on the chance that you need, uh, the priority of that meeting is to get input from the department head, and, or, no, from the constitutional officer, department head that you still have together. But get the information from the constitutional officer that you need to set your, just to approve the miller rate permanently, and set the, and set the campus budget, and there's nothing that, there's no, these budget meetings are not magical, and that, that is not the only time that you can address the constitutional officer. If you have questions to the Board of Elections, they, the Board of Elections have, for example, on the voting machines issue, they have studied that problem. They have a certain responsibility to make sure that, that our election is done correctly, and we're not in that national headline. And based upon their, their duties and their responsibilities, they've made a decision to where they feel the need for these voting machines.
We don't argue that.
But they, but what I'm getting at is, you can, you don't have to wait until, go to the, go to that board and ask them, why do you need, why do you need this many machines at this time? And they'll have a logical explanation for you there, I mean, they, and they will probably present it in the, in the budget meeting. But there's not, the budget meet, the, the budget meetings with that constitutional officer are not the, the only time that you have as a taxpayer to address matters with the magistrate court judge, with the probate court judge. I mean, pick up the phone and ask them what they're doing. They, most of them I know would be glad to talk to you about it, because they feel like they've made a very sound decision. They all seem to have the same mindset, in my experience, to want to do what's, what's right or what's best by the taxpayer, but they're, they have to balance providing the, providing the services that they're constitutionally responsible for with how much money that costs them to do. And many times, if you'll sit down and talk to them about it, they'll explain it, and they'll either explain it the way that, that you understand it, or you'll make points to them, or they'll want to go back and revisit it.
Well, the point is, when we get to, this is the first time we heard about it, was at this meeting, if the Board of Education publish or run an article in progress.
Board of Elections.
We're going to need so many dollars to place our machines, and then they hold a meeting, and it's fine. But the point I would make to, I understand the point. What you're going to be doing is talking theory with any of these people until we get to the hard numbers part of budgets. Where we need to have input is when we can see hard numbers from these various elected officials in departments, and then we need to be able at that moment to say, wait a minute, all those hard numbers, you need to explain to us why we're not doing half that.
Budget hearings, there's three, three meetings in a budget hearings? Can't figure one after the budget hearings are over? Well, what I, what I was going to suggest is, and I can't remember the, do your budget hearings, and then the, the citizenship would sit in on that, on that budget hearing. Then, when you did your next finalized budget hearing, then they would, then they can have input at that time, or at least they can address those, those elected officials between those two meetings.
There has to be a budget hearing before the budget's done.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought.
The last year when we did that, and like I said, we were not allowed to talk, and then the day that the budget was accepted, there was no discussion.
That was at the sessions, at the budget work sessions. Now, if the, if the public hearing, the public, that's what, that's the time that people have to talk.
But we didn't get to do that. The budget was approved, Gavin went down, and we were out of here, and this room last year when the budget was accepted. It needs to be a local ordinance that lets the taxpayer who carries the freight.
It's state law, and we have a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing, it's advertised, we have to have a public hearing before the budget's done.
And how much discussion was there among the public? If the public, but what I'm thinking of, we were right here, there was a number of people here.
I think you had to put yourself on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's what it was, you had to make an appointment or put yourself on an agenda to speak, at one of those types.
Now, we started, now, we started to do that, we started to do that, and, and got changed. It started to do that.
I don't remember if it was last year or the year before last, when we, well, some, I didn't come to all the meetings, but at one point, when we found out, well, the department heads come in here and sat down, and we really found out, I said, I think Fay showed them, said, look, you're upside down, and some money, we got to straighten some things out. I think all the department heads was here one day, and they, and they said, yeah, we're gonna, we got to do something different. Didn't, didn't y'all decide that, that you were going to cut a million dollars out of the spending? What did it?
We did, we all, we all decided, what, what was decided, that we would try, as a, that town hall meeting down at the high school, that all the elected officials would try to do their part to cut back a million dollars out of the, out of the budget.
I'm guilty.
And we got, yeah. And we got.
You played, and we got tried to.
Right. We got part of it, right? We got three, we, we got three hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars out of that money.
That's why the workers' compensation is going to go up like it did, the hospitalization coverage is going up like it was, and I don't, all the other.
Hey, groceries has gone up, fuel's gone up, insurance has gone up, tires have gone up. Hey, well, it is now. But bottom line is, you had to throw it in there. Yeah. Our expenses have gone up too. And the bottom line is, is when that happens, you cut back.
But y'all cut, y'all, y'all cut yours to what you said you was going to.
How many?
And who was supposed to make up the rest of it? Was that ever dictated, or?
Well, it was just, it was just put out there for all elected officials to cut back. You want to go work a million dollars, we cut three fifty, a little better than three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's what we were responsible for.
But you had to go back and get part of it, is that what you're saying?
We haven't got part of it yet, because we're still, we're still cutting as what we're responsible for. Our, our, our position is, we just about cut as far as we can. I mean, I went from thirty-eight down to seventeen, as you know, in the Roads Department. I, I can either, I can either mow grass, or we can pave, or I can dig ditches, but I can't do all three at one time.
Hey, we, we gave you kudos.
And I'm trying, I'm trying to do that to hold, hold the lid down.
I guess just put the, put it out there like I asked, start with, so that the progress will know, and the public can understand why the taxes are going, who's responsible? Who's asking for?
This, this is the first step right here.
That needs to be in the paper.
You're the commission chairman, you can't control everything they do, but you can put the heat on them to the standpoint and say, hey, we got to raise miller rate, you're responsible for raising the miller.
I've got the Sheriff's Department here, I got my AMS director here, Sharon Problem's here.
They was here with the Sheriff's Department.
Sherman McIntyre, in fact, he was Sheriff's Department. They're all here, while we was bringing in. I can't make the others come, we just ask. And they all know, they all read the paper like everybody else does, they all know when to be here.
I hate to say it, but you're the fire line, we're going to pour it on you.
Go for it. I'm going to fire it on my back, on my front, I've been hit many times.
I'd like to say, good job, instead of Rob.
Rob, that's why I think we need a local ordinance, they have to respond to a local ordinance, correct? Phil, is that true? Like, if we pass a local ordinance that the elected officials have to come to a budget meeting that's open, does that hold water? It has to, they're elected officials.
They're, they're held, they're held, they're held, they're held by the, by the highest esteem, by the voters that vote for them. If they don't want to come to these meetings.
The local ordinance is county-wide, and anybody that works for the county is tied to that. Phil, is that?
I'll have to think about that, Rob.
I'm sure everyone will want to keep their job.
What are you going to do if they don't show up? I mean, you can't.
Well, you know, this can't happen in a vacuum, this happens in a vacuum all the time, where this budget is our money, and there isn't anybody in the private sector who hasn't taken a beating in the past six years. We've lost jobs, we've lost businesses, we've lost whatever, our property values are way down, and this government has just kept right on going. Rob, I do understand, and I, I do want to clarify my statement, you guys have cut headcount. We need to keep cutting headcount, and I mean across the county. We should be going from, you know, say, a department has thirty people, where we have a huge benefits cost for those thirty people, plus their salaries. Cut it to twenty and offer overtime to those twenty. We can much more easily afford insurance, retirement, whatever we're stuck with, on twenty people, and then pay them overtime, which makes them happier than we can to have people that are probably feeling jobs that don't take a whole lot of work in those places. We don't know which those jobs are, but I know they exist. There's no such thing as purely efficient government. So we need to be able to address those issues. This is our money, and it is a huge amount of money. And we don't have a forum. We're getting a forum right now, but this can't be three minutes for this guy, two minutes for that guy, and let's get out of here. We're paying every elected official in this county to respond to us. We don't ask them to do it every day, we know that we hire these guys to do their job that they're expert at, but we have every right and every duty to know, how are you spending our money to be an expert at your department? And let us have the input.
Yeah. As long as you understand that once these budgets are approved, all elected officials, Fay cuts them a check, more or less, what, what happens there, they can change it around and spend the money the way they want to.
I understand that, but you know, the overall budget, no, what we're talking about is, we need to run this county based on what the taxpayer has. We were not born to fund governments' wildest dreams. We want to make sure we're not funding wild dreams.
It kind of sounds like we're going back to 2011, just a little bit here, Gus, and that's, you know, I have no fault personally with you, Rob, but let me finish, but the biggest fault I have is all that overspending that we did for all those years, and you could have put the heat on those departments and brought that to the forefront, I don't want that to happen again. We, we had no surplus because of those times. Now, if times do, are picking up a little bit, as they say, let's not go, let's not go backwards here. We had this on the roll from the budget standpoint, and it sounds like to me that now we're having to raise taxes because we're overspending?
Still trying to disperse.
I mean, I don't want to go back to what we had to do before, we had this very clean lens, that if y'all cut, I'll stay. Is that not what happened? Am I misunderstanding that? Did we not discuss that a while ago?
I think, I think that you got to lay out some ideas, like, figure out constitutional officers, something, I don't know how much more you can do today unless y'all want to go back and revisit your motion. I mean, tentative, tentative, have approved, or a half mill increase on the miller. They, per their concerns, like, unless y'all want to go back and revisit that motion, which I don't think you are, I don't know, that you have concerns right to do it, to bring to the other constitutional officers, I don't know what more you could need.
Let's get to your first part.
I was just going to say that all we're asking for is a three percent decrease, right, for the six hundred and something thousand dollars, rather than a half a mill increase. Becky, you've been in private business, to ask for a three percent decrease or a cut, that's nothing. And I just can't understand how you could ask today for an increase when we're in the worst economy we've ever seen, and people are losing their houses, and people lost their jobs. How you going to ask them to go up on the taxes? Y'all three are taxpayers, and the kids are taxpayers. I just can't understand why you can't go back before you would ask for this, whether it's tentative or not, to see where could we cut some more? Because like I said, in private business, we cut all the time, it's called survival. And even when you do this just for survival now, we still aren't addressing the debt that we owe, or our slush fund that we shouldn't have built up. So, isn't there a better way?
Yeah.
I'm not here to scream at you today like I'm normally, but I'm just asking a simple question. I, I think I'll quit that screaming. But, uh, isn't there, isn't there a better solution to this, Rob?
We hope there is, Gary.
Jerry? Becky? No, you can't.
That's the reason I say the word, as long as it's tentative, because I want to make sure.
As long as that's how I stand the word, Phil, we can't go back and say, there's not going to be any budget here, I mean, there's not going to be any miller rate hearings, because we've decided now to leave it as is.
Table.
Is that possible, Phil, or do we have to go into these three meetings?
If they're going to increase, they have to have a meeting.
But can, before that happens, can we say that it's not going to happen?
I don't know if they've got the information from them to do it, though. They need, they need to hear from the other constitutional officers for what they require to talk.
Well, in terms of the information, I think they're sending a message.
Y'all, y'all have the right. And y'all better like to contact them and, and find out what's the plan on that.
Well, I'd like to see you guys rescind what you just said, go back to the one where we're going to be short seventy thousand or whatever, and send a message to these other elected officials that if that is tentative, we're not raising the miller rate.
If you, let me, let me back up, because I, I, I'm going to ask the board commissioners and the calls, we're on the current line, and what we're trying to do is make sure that our taxes come due before the end of the calendar year, so that we don't have a cash flow issue. We, there are a lot of moving parts with regards to getting the, the type, the tax assessor done their job as far as getting it. We've got, we've got to get on track to set a miller rate, we've got to get on, and we have a budget hearings lined up to help us with that. But I, I think it would be a very risky thing, and the risk that you're running is your taxes fall due in January or late, if you rescind anything, guys up today.
Well, for your, can, the, can the board commissioners tell the elected officials, we're going to cut three percent across the board?
They can certainly have those discussions with them.
And do they have any legal ground to do that? Or can they all come back and say, sorry, we're not going to do it? What is the legal right there?
The threshold there is can the, can the constitutional officers, policies that they're required to do with money, that's how.
Because there's steps beyond it, when you say, we're going to cut three percent, and they say, no, and then you defund their project by three percent, then the, the next step is mediation?
No, the next step, usually it's a lawsuit, and then mediation, and I think that's what, what we've been lucky here locally.
Have we ever faced one much before? When the commissioners told the, you know, tax assessor that his, his budget would not be increased, or whoever.
Over the years, we've certainly been in tension, and that's certainly with constitutional officers.
It's never come to a lawsuit.
It's come really close to one, I tell you. But, and what I'm getting at is, I think the body of constitutional officers that we have now seem to be committed to working without, among themselves, rather than going that, that, going down the line.
Would that not be a good start? Just lay it out there saying, here, here's where, if we don't cut three percent, we're going to raise the miller.
I think y'all giving the board commissioners enough where they can go with the constitutional officers, and say, this is what the taxes, this is what we've been hearing on meetings, listen to this.
Mark? Yeah. You been patient, you back there, go ahead.
I've attended the budget work sessions in the little room here, and even in your office when you were sole commissioner. I still haven't got an answer, it's been going back and forth. At the next budget work sessions, will we, as the public, have a chance to question our constitutional officers? Does anybody have a direct answer, yes or no?
You can, you can question them after the meeting's over, unless, unless there's an open, open meeting on public hearings.
I mean, can that be opened up legally for all, during a work session? Can that be opened up legally for the public to ask a question?
Not during a work session, it can be done on an open meeting.
But in those budget discussions, like we set through last year, while that elected official's in there, is it not possible, Phil, that we could ask questions to them before they left the room? before they left the room?
You can have that format in place if you want.
Is that possible? You can set that up?
It's possible that they can look at it. Part of what you're, part of that dynamic is are they going to have, are the meetings going to be productive with the constitutionals? They've got to get a certain amount of information out of them.
Sure. Or at least at the end of the meeting, like we do here.
Once that meeting's adjourned, that, other than board elections, for example, the sheriff meeting by himself is not a, you don't have to have an advertisement to talk to the sheriff or the public court judge or the spirit court judge. You see what I mean? It's only the meeting, the opening meeting, where I'm seeing everyone is this board meeting with that other.
And once the meeting, once the meeting's adjourned, that elected official's still here, then you can talk to them all you want to because there will be some more conversation on that.
I mean, they're here, is what I'm saying, as far as practically, right? What y'all are talking about is actually having an only agenda, or that's the thing. For them to, I don't know how the other constitutionals are going to approach that, if that's going to, and what they're going to have on what purpose of the meeting is, which is to get their numbers out and have an explanation.
And when I say a three percent across the board, because I know that would hurt some departments, worse than others, with Sharon over there, I don't, you know, it looks like she runs real late, because when I go to get a tag, I have to wait a while.
Not this morning, you didn't, maybe it was pretty slow. Maybe you two need to get together.
I think what we're trying to get to is can we have a town hall meeting after we have the preliminary budget?
Well, they're not all coming at the same day. I mean, it's going to be scattered.
Well, they're going to be within a week or so.
Yeah, but they're going to be at different, it's not in this book here.
Hey, Phil, can you do us a favor and look at, you know, I guess what I'm hearing, Rob, say is if it's a work session and we can't talk, fine, then call it something else. Can you look at what our rights are and what format we need?
I'll discuss it with you.
Because the time to bring it up is when the constitutional officer says, I need this with no explanation. And if we have to wait till afterwards, now, last year, Gary, see if you think the same way, when these guys were finished, they were out the door, they had a meeting, three minutes were out, there was no time for us to catch them. So people came in, they dropped their numbers on you, you guys could ask some questions. They hit the bricks, and we're waiting for the next person to walk through the door. That needs to change. We need to have whatever the legal wording of that meeting is, whereas each one of those constitutional officers comes in, that's a once a year, or maybe it's twice when they come back. I think out of three hundred and sixty-five days, they can talk to the taxpayer about our money for extra thirty minutes. If they were in there for thirty minutes, tell them to plan them out. We're paying their salaries, they can make that meeting. So we need to know what you can do from a legal viewpoint to give us...
I'll talk to the constitutionals.
...of voice.
Yeah, one, this question for Phil again, but the board of elections, when they have their meetings, is there, I've been to their meetings and never been able to say anything, is it by law that they don't have a public comment section in there, or they just don't have it in there at the time?
The only reason why the board, why this board commissioners has a public comment section because it's in the local line, but the public, the Open Meetings Act itself does not require public participation. That's what I was telling Joe, it's a public meeting, not a meeting of the public. So it's entirely up to them whether or not they're going to have an open forum or create that, create that forum for public speech.
But they could if they wanted to. You know, it's just hasn't been on their agenda, there's not a lot of people that go to their meetings, but with this new request, it might be something that happens.
It might be, and like I say, they, I'm sure that they have a very reasoned, logical reason why they want those, need those extra voting machines.
Yeah.
So you, and I might ask one last question, I'm going to shut up. Is that, you know, we're trying to drive that thing. Did y'all, do you guys not have any communication with these other departments throughout the year? Okay, so, all right, if I was running a corporation, and you three were on my board, and you came to me and said, we need to increase this, we, I, my first question would have been, what have you done to try to not increase it? Because it sounds like to me we're all, we're doing this...
Can we tell you what the questions were that I asked? Number one, do you need new machines? Number two, why do you need new machines? Number three, do they have a lease program if I have to buy these new machines? Do we have to buy all the new machines up front at one time? Those are the questions that I ask when I find out this stuff, other than, other than they just come in and bring us the numbers and Fay gets them.
That's just one department.
That's just one department.
So if you know you've got to have, you know you've got to have voting machines, and you've known this for hours of along, you go to the other departments, you cut from the other department so that you can pay for the voting machines in this department? I mean, by my, it's like I told you guys a year ago, it sounds like they have no plan. Everybody, it's like everything's haphazardly backwards. That's what it looks like from my end up. Now, like I said, if you were working for me, and you were on my board, and you came to me with that, and I knew that it wasn't in our budget, I would have said, better go back to the drawing board, don't come to me with this mess. Don't find the, be a problem solver, not a problem for you.
If you don't know they need voting machines until they send you an notice that they do, that's all I could ask for. That's what they did.
If you get slapped in the face with something...
Then we find out, Fay.
But we knew we were going to be over budget.
So I mean, that number of elections that are going to be next year, their budget would probably be lower than even by then would.
We're talking about one department here. It can't be, the hundred thousand dollars is not the whole problem.
No, there's other, there's other departments here, I'm showing in the book here. But what are you asking?
I'm saying, why in the world are we doing this at last year? Why didn't we have a resolve for this? Why did we come here and say, look, we've already, we've been through all of the, the rhythm where we're trying to find the cuts, there's no other way to do this, and you wouldn't be hearing the heat from us from that end?
My question is, and that being your statement, my question is, is every elected official here knows that we've requested three percent cutbacks for many years. So why should we have to keep hammering it on? We keep hammering it on all our years, and we keep on.
And that's where I throw it back to you, my friend.
Throw it back to me.
Don't listen to me. That's why I throw it back to you. You are the head commissioner. If that's the way, the response you're getting from the departments or no response, that needs to be brought to the forefront. I can't get this department to respond. This is what we need to do. It's a political thing that you, you're playing politics.
We've, no. I, I, I'll factor on that one. I have, I have, and Fay and all the department heads here, we send them a email every time we're having a county meeting. We want them here to go over their budgets every month.
Right.
Now, I can't make them come. The newspaper's here, the newspaper knows it.
Put that in there in big red letters, the department heads, the latter department heads, we not show up for the commissioners.
How many times did I mention that, Dan?
I can believe it.
Thank you. But I can't help it, if you don't print.
Why would you do that?
No, but I have to.
You said in big red letters, everybody has seen it?
Yeah, I've got it in big red letters.
Big red letters!
Well, I mean, if that's, if that's the issue, then let's address that issue. I don't know if that's all the issues or not. That's why I'm open, that's why I like to have other comments to see what's going on. I think, I think that...
Part of the big issue is that we've got people spending the money that don't show up to take this.
I know, I agree with you a hundred percent. Don't be, don't be wrong.
I'm, I'm all right.
No, 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 I know you're, it's just like Joey said, we've got other departments that are spending the money that are causing the problem.
That's what he's been publicizing.
And that's what I'm saying. If you work for me, and you came to me with that and said, these other departments are causing the problem, and I've got the resolve, I would have said, don't come to me with that, that should have been fixed. It wasn't fixed on the front end.
Now, I'll shut up. Get back here.
We've got three people, three different departments represented here right now, and I'm sure when this meeting's over, none of them three are going to run out of this room that we, the citizens, have a chance to go talk to them.
That's correct.
I have talked through the years, through this past year, to two of the judges, asking about, see them on the street, how's your budget doing, how are you doing? And they will stop and give you the answers. I've stopped in and talked to Donnie Craig. So, I mean, we, instead of coming here and saying, you guys make sure, we as citizens need to get us, plus our neighbors, to go stop in on them once a month. Go down to the courthouse. Now, it's hard to get one of the judges, she seems to be busy a lot, but the district attorney, I've talked to Allison before about this, about the budget, it only takes a couple minutes, and the more we go in and talk to them, the more they're going to understand we're watching. And we can go in and say, hey, you need to cut your budget three percent. I'm paying your bills, you know, what can you do to help us? I can't afford another increase. And we can do more good than just these three commissioners up there trying to tell them. And there's another department come in, he's a department himself, but you can always talk to Jim, but, you know, what can he do to help? And I know he's doing his best he can, so it's available, you just have to go look for it.
You need more information when you come to the ones that are doing the work.
I agree with you.
And I'll hush up.
You're fine.
You can put it right, Greg.
Senator, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm confused. Okay, are we going to advertise the military rate decrease this week?
Ten.
Or ten?
Ten. That's what you got here in the...
Okay, even though it's tentative, we're going to have to advertise it here, you all understand that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, Phil was talking about the timeline of, we're not having any meetings next week of Labor Day. I was planning to advertise this week. If you think that it's, this is not going to be tentative, if you only have a few more days this week, if we could get this, get a firm decision, if you think it's going to change, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to make you, ask you to rescind anything, but it's just a lot of confusion if we advertise that there's going to be a half mil increase and you go through the public hearings and then we go back to the rollback rate. I think it's a lot of confusion, it's a lot of stress for everybody, if it's unnecessary. But that's, what I'm saying is, we have time, we have that extra weekend here, because the meetings to, the two public hearings are on Thursday, September eleventh, and the meeting to adopt is at the regular board meeting on September eighteenth. So we have, we don't have to put the advertisement on the paper this week, we can put it in next week. That's just some consideration, I don't know, I don't think we do that since we're tentative. My feeling is, I just wanted to make sure that the areas that we're in charge of, that we're being physically responsible in, and look at everything. I would say to do that tonight, what's your thoughts?
If we go late in time, I'll still work.
We'll need to have, I think, a couple of them are out of town next week, we need my work session, so we'll need to have a meeting at least by Friday, when they're called waiting to...
Which Friday?
This Friday.
Oh, okay.
Friday this week.
Okay.
To, so that it can be advertised next week, that would keep us on the, on the basic timeline.
But can we, can we...
Even if we do have to have a public hearing.
Instead of having, instead of going back in here for a public hearing on Friday just to put this in the paper, can we just, can this just go on the paper next week? I mean, why do you have to have another meeting?
You're talking about rescinding.
You're talking about rescinding it and they're not, they're not voting on. Well, we're not, we're not going to have the numbers from these departments and the elected officials next week, are you?
No. So advertise the military rate increase?
We're sort of getting behind on that. We should have had these meetings, get them whittled down as much as we could, let the public come and talk to them if they don't satisfy them too, and then we'll know what to do.
There you go. You finally got one. There you go. Actually, we're...
Well, basically, we just had two people showing up at their meetings last year, Gary and Joe, at our budget.
Trust me, Gary talked me that time. A lot of that was because the newspapers said, no public comment. And a lot of people are going to say, well, if I'm not allowed to give my input, and these people are above me so much that they can't come down to my level and converse with me, I'm not going. This needs to be changed in that regard. And if you guys were to rescind, and you still have the time, which I think is what Fay's saying, that sends a message to these other elected officials that the taxpayers are saying, you know what, we're not changing the military rate, you're going to have to make a good case for us to do it. If you give them this half percent tentatively, they think, ah, I'm good, I got my money.
I mean, Phil's right, we did need to stay on the timeline to have it approved on the eighteenth. But also, you have to understand, the property, the military rate, the property taxes that we're collecting in 2014 will help support next year's budget, but it has basically got to pay back on ten though.
Probably got to come in this year.
Whatever we build, the fund balance backed up enough so that we have a cash flow and not, don't have to rely on the tens, then we'll have the money to cash flow our current budget and the, this 2014, the property taxes we collect at the end of this year will fund next year's budget forward. That's, that's why, I know it's, it seems like we do the military rate instead of the military property tax for this year before we set the budget.
Well, that's because we're paying last year's bills. It's always been set up, but it has not.
This year, I think, the property taxes is funding this year's expenditure. I mean, it will help cash flow next year, but it's basically funding this year's.
Rob, it has not always been set up that way. I've talked to previous commissioners, and that changed during your administration. And it did too. I talked Frank Martin and Don Malax both about it, and...
No, it did not.
They said that they collect the property taxes in late...
Nothing had changed.
And that money was put together to pay next year's bills, because the money used to not be paid until February, right?
And it was, and they rolled money over to make that happen. Ask her.
Nothing has changed. I'll tell you something else, I talked to, it used to be the finance director up here.
I don't care. It didn't change during my administration. And she's been here twenty-two years, it's always been that way.
You collect the money at the end of the year to pay last year's bills.
Yes.
That's true, that's true.
That had never, now, they're telling you that...
But wasn't there a time that it was collected and that then I was speaking with?
Yeah, yes.
But that, that was because everything was so slow and they needed money before then to take care of the rest of the year.
Well, I think that's what Joey was talking about, and we didn't have a...
They didn't have a chance to repay them.
So what are we going to do to fix it?
We're working on it.
Got to have a plan.
Working on it.
But my question, Fay, is when do you foresee that fund being built back up, that we could dip into to offset these military increases?
It's going to take a few years. It'll take a few years.
But we've got to have a plan to get there, don't we?
Right.
We've got to, we've got to collect more than we spend, don't we, Fay?
Do what, Fay?
We have about five hundred thousand left in the interest this year.
So it's a start?
So, yes.
Because last year, we had less than a hundred thousand interred, but there's been a time that we've had five or six million.
Mm-hmm. But we started this in 2011, not 2014. Takes a long time to build it back. Can you use your fund balance, some of your fund balance to help keep them raising taxes because those department heads are running over, but that's another story. Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for being here. Let's see, we need to, before I dismiss, what do you want, what do you want?
I need, I just need to be on, do you want to advertise this week and then have the public hearings on September eleventh?
We've got, we've got the tentative set up, but we wouldn't change it if we need to. Correct?
You can change it at any time before it's approved, yes. But you want to advertise the property?
I'd do it.
Advertise it?
I'd put it up there.
Okay.
Don't you mind?
That's all I have.
We're not getting involved, we don't have someone to play with.
So we have three public meetings, four except?
Yes, yeah.
And when would they start if you advertised this week, Fay?
The public hearings, at least one of them has to be between the hours of six o'clock and seven o'clock, that you can't have two on that same day. So right now, they're scheduled for Thursday, September eleventh, at ten o'clock in the morning and at six o'clock at night. And then the next public hearing will be on Thursday, September eighteen, that's the regularly scheduled board of commissioners meeting. And the public hearing will be at five o'clock, the commissioners meeting will start at five thirty.
Is it not possible to have them all in the afternoon?
That would be...
Because most, you know, most of us have to work during the day.